I'm going to call the meeting to order at 6:32 PM. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Wee?
Present.
Student trustee Springborn?
Present.
Trustee Garcia?
Present.
Trustee Jen is not with us today. His absence is excused. Trustee Greer?
Present.
Trustee Heredia?
Present.
Trustee Lanza?
Present.
Trustee Mojadetti?
Present.
And board president Granger?
Present.
Okay, moving on to item 1.6, pledge to the flag. Trustee Heredia, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the liberty of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on to item 1.7, public comments.
Any person wishing to address the board on any open session matter of concern has been requested to complete a request to address the board of trustees card and file it with the recording secretary of the board prior to the start of the meeting. Individuals will be called upon to speak by the presiding officer. The board cannot act on or discuss items not listed on the agenda. The secretary will call on the member of the public at this time and allow the member of the public to provide live comment. The district limits each speaker to three minutes, and the district will no longer read email public comment aloud during the meeting. And we have Gregory Correa.
Well, good evening. Couple days ago, I got a call from Greg Reese. And what it was, I was shocked to see that he got a check from this corrupt place that he should have got 17 years ago, but he got it two days ago. What kind of shit that? So you got Gerhardt's signature, you got Nicholas's thing. How could something go that should have been done 17 years ago, happens in two days ago? Kind of corruption did you guys do? And you know you're liars. You're a liar, man. I swear to God. How can you do that when you tried to also bend them, uh, uh, didn't do the right thing when we were sitting down there, down on the first floor? We had to stop it because you lied then. You've lied so many times. This guy is the same way as you. It's sad. How could you give him his check? What about perks? Are you ever going to give him his perks? When are you going to do that? When could you make that decision? Jen's not here. He could do it. He could have done it a long time ago. There's people in this room that know that. Why can't you guys do that? It's, that's what we're supposed to do as human beings. It's supposed to help one another. Obviously, you don't do that. None of you do that. The trustees that I'm talking to right now, there is no way that that should ever happen. Two days ago, he just got his check. And he had also was $1,400, and then they had interest, and they had to give him $1,800, or a little over $1,800. Now, could you imagine that? And he still can't get his perks? I really want to say a lot of swear words here, but I don't want to do that because it would insult myself and it would insult other people. But when I know the truth, and you know I know the truth because you're a liar, you should come outside and talk to me man to man, face to face, and bring your buddy too. Because you're not telling the truth. You've lied so many times against Greg Reese. So does this guy? What a nutcase. You got lucky to get in this job here. You're lucky because this is, at one time, a great institution. Not now. I tell everybody, it ain't, it ain't right here when you can't give a man that had 19 and a half years as a sheriff, a decorated sheriff, and his wife was a three-time wounded brutal harvest, and you guys called her a whore. Come on! That ain't nice. Why don't I come here? Do you know why I come here? Because I believe in the truth. And I will come back here again next week or next month, excuse me. Because you guys got to do something. You got to ask him that question. What did you do? That's what you got to ask him. I ain't going nowhere. I'm real healthy. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you. Moving on to item 1.8, approval of consent items. Are there any trustees who wish to have an item removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I believe we have a readout from HR.
Thank you. Government Code Section 54953(c)(3), which requires that before taking final action, the board must orally report a summary of the recommendation regarding the salaries, salary schedules, or compensation paid in the form of fringe benefits of local agency executives. Therefore, I'm making the following summary regarding such items appearing on the consent agenda. Item 3.2, management personnel, pertains to final action by the board regarding the approval for the following contracts of employment. John Gomez, Hispanic Serving Institutions Director, Range 13, Step 6. The contract of employment mentioned above is entitled to the same fringe benefit package as other managers per board policy and procedures. And also, Thomas Burke, Interim Vice President, Administrative Services, $106.49 an hour, no benefits.
Thank you. At this time, a motion would be in order to approve the consent calendar.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
We have a first by trustee Greer, a second by trustee Garcia. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Wee?
Aye.
Student trustee Springborn?
Aye.
Trustee Garcia?
Aye.
Trustee Greer?
Aye.
Trustee Heredia?
Aye.
Trustee Lanza?
Aye.
Trustee Mojadetti?
Aye.
And board president Granger?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to our first presentation, item 1.10, our economic development and contract education update. Chancellor Gerhardt?
Yeah, thank you, President Granger. So this evening, we have our annual presentation of the board related to our annual update for our Economic Development and Contract Ed Department. For that, I will hand it over to Vice Chancellor Flicero.
Thank you very much. So tonight, board, the annual EdC presentation. As Chancellor Gerhardt mentioned, you'll hear from our executive director, Julia Dozier, who has 22 years as an administrator with our district. She's the longest standing district administrator, and she runs an enterprise unit for, for the district, which means no general funds are used to support the operations. It's revenue generating, and we always look forward to years where EdC can contribute back to the district. So Julia is here. I do want to say she's joined by her management team, so they're in the audience, and two students who you will hear from, student apprentices. So EdC, one of the programs they oversee is apprenticeship. So we're looking forward to hearing from you, Julia. Pass it over to you.
Thank you, Chancellor. Vice Chancellor, trustees, it's really good to be here. Well, I thought I was doing so well by planning this ahead of time. Nope? Yes, here? Okay. Ah, okay, we're on a roll. Didn't have to turn it off and turn it back on again. Okay, so before I get started, I want to introduce my, the managers that actually do all the work for this department. So if you would stand, please. Lucia Tashera, who's our director of apprenticeship programs. Donna Malawan, who is our operations manager. Elsiean Lindo, who's program manager of our Tri Valley Career Center. And Najee Oskar, the director of our OSHA Training Center. Thank you all for being here. You rock. Appreciate you. Okay. Just a reminder, there are seven areas of focus for EdC, and you've seen this before, but I will be touching on these various areas. We are very aware of the fact that we are part of the district services, we are part of the district as a whole, and as such, we keep the board's goals, priorities, and strategic direction in mind as we do our work. We also contribute to the district's goals for the SCIF benchmarks, primarily for our apprenticeship program. So to get started, someone, a couple of people who are much more interesting than I am are student apprentices. I'm going to have Lucia introduce them, please.
Good evening, everyone. We're so lucky today to hear directly from two of our apprentices who've kindly volunteered to share their apprenticeship journey with us. Blanca Bresiaga, a behavioral health specialist and wellness coach. Nikia Parker, an Alameda County health coach. They will be sharing their experiences in how apprenticeships are helping their growth and success. I know you'll enjoy hearing from them. Please join me in welcoming Blanca and Nikia.
Hello. The Behavioral Health Apprenticeship has opened doors I only once dreamed of walking through. It has provided me with invaluable opportunities and resources that have significantly shaped my education and professional journey. Throughout my time in this apprenticeship, I've been fortunate to receive guidance from mentors and coaches who have supported me every step of the way. With their help, I've earned scholarships and grants that have aligned the load and made my path more accessible. I began my career in behavioral health as a mental health counselor with Seneca Family of Agencies. From there, I advanced to a case aid and support counselor with Alternative Family Services, and most recently, I was hired as a youth stabilization specialist at Seneca's short-term residential program. These are roles I never imagined I could attain before this program. The mentorship, the support and structure provided by the apprenticeship made all of this possible. For some of us, the college experience doesn't begin right after high school. Life happens, trauma, responsibilities, setbacks, and these experiences can delay our goals. But through those challenges, we also gain perspective. We gain the lived experiences that help us better understand the clients we serve, and that makes us strong compassionate advocates in the behavioral health field. I am proud to say that I formed meaningful connections with both clients and colleagues simply by sharing my story. This apprenticeship didn't just help me find a career, it empowered me to find my voice and my purpose. As a member of the first cohort of this apprenticeship program, I am hopeful that I've helped pave the way for those who came after me. I want future apprentices to know that the opportunities I've received can be theirs too. Many individuals in this program have worked in the field for years without a chance to advance simply because they lacked formal credentials, and this program has changed that. It's breaking barriers and creating real pathways for professional growth and educational achievement. Thank you all.
Hello, everyone. My name is Nikia. So I just, I got my apprenticeship, my certificate for the community health worker, and we actually was at Highland. I did hours at Options Recovery in Berkeley, and they hired me. So this has opened the doors. I worked in the healthcare field before as a medical assistant, but I stopped with my child, became disabled. He has autism. So I've been out for a while, and when I came back, Tri Valley Career Center, just like, they had all the opportunities, they had the resources, and I was able to get connected. And then I did the apprenticeship with Dr. J at Highland, and now I'm working at Options. And I just recently registered as an SUD counselor. So the doors, this opportunity, and it was a stipend which helped me as well as being a single mother of three. Apprenticeship really is important, and we just, I just want to thank you from, I'm sure, are the ones that come after me, because this is really able to help us, and the networking, the tools, the community is, it's just been a blessing. And I thank you guys. I was able to just meet so many different wonderful and powerful people at Highland. But I guess Options really loved me, so they kept me, and I'm there now, and I'm learning, you know, with the pandemic of, with, you know, the drug abuse and not understand, well, I come from Isfalato, I was born and raised from Isfalato. So that was, I've seen all this, but just to be able to be on the other side of the table, hearing their stories, and knowing I too was around it, it just helped me to understand and be more compassionate, and I'm just so grateful for this opportunity because you wouldn't think, you wouldn't know that you can actually go to a job and actually talk about your past and trauma and understand other people that's not judging you. So I'm able to help the community, and, you know, thank you.
Why we do what we do, right? Thank you both. Okay. So I, you have a lot of information, a lot of data on our programs here. I'm going to just touch on some of them rather than go reading all of it. So more information about our apprenticeship programs. We continue to be a leader in the state as far as the state apprenticeship programs are concerned. We have almost 3,500 apprentices in 15 different occupations, and I'll give you a list of those soon. As a reminder, apprenticeship programs are a combination of classroom learning as well as on-the-job training. Apprentices are hired the first day that they're there, so they have income. And in addition to our, so we get paid by the state on an hourly basis for the classroom training, but also the work experience, both classroom training and work experience both provide college credit for our apprentices. In addition to the, those, the programs, we are administering $1.1 million in grants, in state apprenticeship grants, oh, there's a federal one as well. In apprenticeship grants, there is a lot of money out there as far as apprenticeships are concerned, and we are taking well advantage of it to both support the programs that we have as well as grow some new ones. So we currently have 19 programs. As you can see, there's a couple there that, we've got two actual unions that are working with us, both the craft laborers as well as sprinkler fitters. So we've got three different sprinkler fitter programs, apparently it's a program. And so you can see that there's a combination of the traditional trades, which is what people always thought of when we came to apprenticeship programs, but we are also doing more and more of the non-traditional industries. I find that especially interesting. It's great to do. Apprenticeship programs are a, what's known as a long sales cycle, if you will, in business. It takes about two years from the beginning of when someone or an employer says, yes, I want to do this, to actually having the apprentices in chairs and getting college credit for it. And so we need to have programs in the pipeline all the time. You can see that we continue to get more traditional trades and even more non-traditional industries. That does say museum tour guide, which I think is very cool. Viticulture workers, just to let you know, President, we, we're getting there. We haven't contacted you yet, but we will be. Look, these are, I know you, I see you, okay? In addition to this, we have a pre-apprenticeship program. Chancellor Gerhardt, this is for you. He's been asking about pre-apprenticeship programs for a while. As you heard earlier, this came through the Tri Valley Career Center in partnership with Tri Valley ROP. It is, starts with the CNA program and moves to the health coach. Okay, moving on. Oh, Director Tashera, thank you for the work you do. I really appreciate it. Tri Valley Career Center continues to be active and grow 1,500 participants, 243 workshops. We are doing more and more of our own training. In the past, we would pay clients to go to training. We now are providing more and more training locally, and including our forklift training, which has been very successful, that's one of our clients up there in the forklift, and our CNA program. Those are the numbers, participants for this year. We also go out to the community to let people know. Again, just a reminder, the Career Center is for employers as well as people who are looking for, to change their careers or to upskill. Another program that we have of note is our Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program. We had 63 volunteers from the community this year. That's a lot of people who came and were certified in order to provide tax assistance, and we filed 684 tax returns. Of note is, we're doing more and more grants for the Career Center. Elsiean Lindo has been beast in pursuing, in pursuing grants. Vice Chancellor? You just approved two more apprenticeship, sorry, two more Career Center grants, including a $4 million, two-year, $4 million grant for the Career Center, which is way bigger than they've ever done before. And it will be for reentry people, so we are expanding into that area. I'm really excited about it. Well done, Elsiean. Next is our OSHA Training Institute Education Center. We've been doing this for 17 years now, and so 1,900 students, 172 individual safety courses. As you can see, the split between in-person and online continues to grow, and this is just in response to what the students want. So we are, we are able to offer more classes to students that are, don't have to travel to our classes, obviously. We gave out 41 certificates. The 10-hour cards, just a reminder, we train the trainer, people who go out and offer 10-hour OSHA, OSHA 10 and OSHA 30, for, primarily for construction, but also for general industry. And so this year, the trainers go out, they give the training, and then they send us the list, and we, we actually distribute the cards. We distributed over 20,000 cards this year. That's a huge program. Just note, our region has grown. FedOSHA has combined a couple of regions, so our region has grown. But I wanted to draw your attention especially to the International Association for Continued Education and Training certification that we got, accreditation that we got. Director Oskar has done incredible job for this. This took many six, nine months, something like that, to get to. It means that we can give continued education credit for all of our classes, regardless of what happens to OSHA. Beds are always up in the air, we're not sure. And so this is something that will make us especially competitive, if you will. We continue to be a fiscal sponsor, or fiscal agent, if you will. We managed $15.2 million in grants this year, including three Ed Services grants. You know about the K-16 and the Transfer Counselor website. EB Can has been around for a while and is finishing up this year. In addition to that, we have four chancellor's office grants, including the Rising Scholar Digital Textbook Grant. Rising Scholar Program is for colleges that go into prisons to provide classes for incarcerated students. And we administer, that's a many multimillion dollar grant as well. Okay, Child Welfare is very close to my heart, always has been, it's been around, well, longer than I have, not, no, a year after I got here. And it is something that you all should be incredibly proud of, the work that is being done in Chubot La Spacita, Community College District's name. This is, again, just a reminder, this is to train social services staff who work with foster and adoptive care children. 54,000 participants in classes this last year alone. We work with subcontracting agencies, but we also provide resources so that the staff can attend state and national conferences. This is huge, especially in those little tiny Northern California counties that just don't have money to be able to send their staff. And so because we are partnering with them, we use federal dollars for this, and it says nine there, and in October, that will probably, we'll bring in another one back to you, so it will be in 10 county, 10 counties that we're partnering with. Again, this is something that is a revenue generator for the district. It is, these dollars help offset the cost of our other programs. Contract education or workforce training, people don't know what contract education is, so we're changing it to workforce training. The interesting thing about this is the growth in this particular area. It was a very small, kind of quiet program in the past. Now we have employers that are coming to us that want to send their employees to college classes, and they want to pay for it, the employers want to pay for it. And so we serve as a concierge, kind of like, and so that we work with the deans and the faculty over at the college, we work with Chubot College, to make sure that their students are getting to the classes and that we are invoiced rather than, and then we pass along to the employer. Interesting thing about this particular area is that in, so this is fiscal year '25, we netted $160,000. In fiscal year '23, we netted $12,000. So that's, that's just incredible growth in that area. Okay. Behavioral health, you heard about one of our, one of our apprentices here. We've got a number of different areas that are, things that are going on in behavioral health. As you know, this is an area that is, has a huge need throughout the state for people to go into behavioral health. We have our apprenticeship program and our one-year justice system involved youth program. The future providers is a single semester education and/or employment support. We have people working at Chubot and serving as interns. But also what we are doing is getting the word out there about this career pathway. It's incredibly important that we get people to know that this is important and that it's an opportunity for them. And so those numbers down below are just us getting out to the community and letting people know about this. We just recently were awarded a pilot project grant by the state chancellor's office that will be coming in the next, however long it takes the chancellor's office to get this contract, in a few months. And it is where we are going to be providing technical assistance to two other colleges in the state to duplicate our three-year apprenticeship program. They are so impressed with it. And so we are receiving money from the state chancellor's office, but also from other state departments that are very, very supportive of this program. Okay, financials. This is our, last four years of our financials. You look on the far right, that little tiny blot that is green on the top, see how it's above that line? That's all that matters. That's, that's all that matters. We would like it to be even higher, but I just need it above the line. And so, so it, it means that not only are we covering our expenses, but we also are generating revenue for the district and slowly coming back in that area. And that is it. I thank you all for your support. EdC is a unique program in the state. People have no idea what we do, which is just fine, but we, we are doing a whole lot of things on your behalf we couldn't do without that, and so I am truly grateful to all of you for your support. And I will take any questions.
Do we have questions or comments from trustees? Trustee Mojadetti?
Executive Director Dozier, thank you for your presentation. And first, really just want to thank you and the entire leadership team at EdC for all that you do. I had the chills just throughout the whole presentation, like what a great way to start the school year, because our EdC program is, unit area is such an important engine of workforce development in our county throughout so many important sectors, and in particular, health and human services sector. And throughout the presentation and through the testimonials, like those, these, these work workforce development opportunities are supporting our community and our district and right here in our county. And so, just so grateful and appreciative. And, you know, I'm sad that Blanca and Nakia aren't here, because their testimony was so incredibly powerful. I wrote down, you know, Blanca had said in her, in her share values and purpose, and Nakia talked about opening the doors. But what I really heard in addition to that from both of them is belonging. And I know the work that we do with our students, whether it's apprenticeship programs, whether it's at the colleges, is really to create and, and develop belonging, because that sense of empowerment, like, that's so important to the work we do, and it's so important now more than ever. So just thank you so much for your leadership, thank you so much for the work that you all do. And again, like, I think such a great way to start this academic year with this presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we will pass your comments along to the apprentices.
Trustee Lanza.
So every year, I sit and I enjoy the conversation and the discussion, and now when I look at the success, the continued success, and I look at the number of programs you have now, but even more so, the other 10 that you're looking to add, how far can we stretch you?
The county, you're talking about the social services, child welfare?
The apprenticeship program, so.
Oh, oh, yes, no problem. We got lots of space. This thing is just kind of mostly sitting around, so if it gives her an opportunity to actually get some work done. No, in all seriousness, it is growing significantly. To answer your question, we are going to get to the tipping point where we're going to need to bring on more staff to help with that. It's, we have, we have a program coordinator, Maya Elhariri, who is doing an amazing job. She was actually at Chubut's A&amp;R and worked on that side of the house and then came over and worked with us. So, yeah, to answer your question, we don't have a choice. These programs are out there, this is where the iron is hot, if you will, and so we, we figure it out.
We encourage it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Heredia.
Thank you for your presentation. It's always a pleasure every year to hear the success of the program, and I want to commend you for the model, varied and multiple level program that you run. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Trustee Garcia.
Thank you, Executive Director Dozier. I actually want also commend you and appreciate having the opportunity to learn about how the program has been growing. I have a question to kind of dig into more. I guess I'd like to understand, how is it that you determine the additional programs that you seek to build apprenticeship connections to?
Specifically in apprenticeship programs? So my managers will tell you that my basic line is, whatever people ask for, the answer is yes. And so when we get new programs, we, they say, can you? And we say, sure. And then we figure out how to do it. And so, for the most part, the programs come to us. We don't go out and solicit programs. We have a very good reputation in the state. It's not bragging necessarily, that's just the way it is. So we have the Division of Apprenticeship Standards refer programs to us that are interested in doing this. And also, for a few of them, like when you saw duplicates of the same program, we would have a program that was up here already, so the laborers and the sprinkler fitters, and they would have sister unions in other areas, and they would recommend that they, that we partner with them. There's no longer restriction on apprenticeship programs, so we can serve anyone in the state. And so that too is, is a way that we get it, but it's, it's primarily word of mouth.
Thank you.
Trustee Grur.
Just want to say thank you. Hearing, as trustee Mosadidi said, it's really helpful to hear from students and how it impacts them and how it benefits them, and just how it provides opportunity that they might not have had. And it's given them, you know, a, kind of a calling, like for, for so many people. You know, I think of my own calling and how that happens, and it's the experience that's okay. So thank you for all the work, and it's, it's certainly impressive. And of course, thank you to all, all of you. It's, thank you for coming and for making it happen, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. And I'll just add, I do want to also share my appreciation for the entire team at Etsy in the work that you do. It is really just, I think, another shining example of how our Community College District leads throughout the state. And when we look at meeting the needs of the workforce, that we are really partnering with employers and to help meet the needs for their particular workforce. And we also understand how you can expand a model that has worked traditionally with trades into new career opportunities. So I do really look forward to coming, seeing in future years the growth of the behavioral health apprenticeship programs that you're developing, because I imagine those numbers are going to get quite big in the next few years as well. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Now moving on to item 1.11, we have another presentation, our Information Technology Services Update. Chancellor Gerhart.
Yeah, thank you, President Gerger. So this evening is another annual, really an update provided to the board from our chief technology officer, Bruce Griffin, who provided the board an update regarding our information technology as well as data security. So Bruce?
President Gerger, trustees and chancellor, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'll just jump into the agenda. I can go down a rabbit hole like nobody else, so we're going to keep it to three big things, and if we break off from that, then I'll try to control myself a little bit. But the three things, the MyPortal and self-service, and I think you all have been prepped now on MyPortal, hopefully. Enrollment fraud mitigation and cybersecurity. Those would be the three big topics tonight. So let's go ahead and look at MyPortal and self-service. We'll talk about what it is, its main features, and how it benefits us as a district, as well as our students, faculty and staff. So essentially, it's, it's a one, online, one-stop shop. In the past, we've had applications on through the web, scattered all over. Click on this link, go here, put in your password, click on this link, go here, put in your password. This brings everything together through a single sign-on for those third-party applications, and really presents a much better experience for our students. It's customizable by the user. We'll see in a minute, it's got password reset functionality, which before was a manual process. I think one of the key features is it's mobile-friendly. The old system that we used, you'd scroll down, you'd scroll across, you'd scroll down, you'd scroll across. We know students in particular use their phones predominantly, and this is much more easily used there. And then finally, it's just got a better look and feel. I think we all like pretty over ugly, so we'll share that in just a moment. So briefly, we talked about the self, password self-help, being able to click on forgot password in much more easy way than we were able to do before. We also have a much longer, more complex password than we did in the past with the old system. And this really boosts up our security. When you look at how long it takes for someone to hack a 12-character complex password, you know, it's hundreds, if not thousands, of years to pound away on it. So it really eliminates the chances for brute force attacks there. Again, looking at pretty versus ugly. MyPortal on the left is a much more modern approach. ClassWeb on the right, our older system, served us well for a long time, and I don't want to take away from all the work that went into that. It just, it's time had come. So one of the things you'll see about MyPortal is that it can pull data directly and bubble that up to you from our ERP system. So you'll see of the three cards on the bottom left, or the bottom right, I'm sorry, of the MyPortal page, you'll see it says click to show paste ups. Before, on the, on the right on ClassWeb, you had to click down, click down, click down, select a year, click down again. This is right there. It's, out of privacy, it hides it, you click it, and it shows a very nice chart of what your, what your overall earnings were, how much you took home, what your taxes were, what your benefits deductions are, without clicking 19 times to get into it. In the future, we'll have similar functionality for students. Right now, you can look at degree progress and see how far you've gone. I would show mine, except it shows 0%, and that's a little embarrassing. But you'll also be able to do a new version of registration through MyPortal, so a new version of self-service there. Same thing with financial aid and other aspects of the old ClassWeb. They're gradually moving over from that classic ClassWeb card into the self-service SSB9 card that you see in the middle. And it also has the ability to show announcements across the top, which is really helpful to bubble things up to folks, so they're not diving down, or it's getting close to, you know, time to apply for financial aid, we can put the announcement there and get it in front of students in a way that we otherwise might not have been able to. One of the nice things about MyPortal is that it's customizable. So if you look at this other version on ClassWeb, that's everybody kind of seeing the same thing. And in some cases, it's, it's pretty much a link farm of click here, click here, click here. Students have to remember where to go. Once in ClassWeb, they select any one of these cards, and it breaks those cards into group based on who you are, so students won't see all of those cards, employees won't see all of those cards. But you've got a catalog you can select from, and those will, wrong direction, those will appear in the MyPortal page until you decide, I don't need this anymore, and you can get rid of it. So very flexible that way. A little challenging sometimes, to be honest, to work with a student, and you don't see over the phone what they're saying, because they've customized it in a way you may not be aware of. But I think overall, the benefit is certainly there. Moving on to enrollment fraud mitigation, so topic that hate to have to talk about, to be honest. But it's, it's really, I think, important and widespread, not just at Chubut, Los Pecitas, but across the state, and really across the nation. You know, to start off with fighting at scale, the numbers I read recently, that through the CalMatters organization, they put out an article, estimates that 1.2 million applications over 24, 25 are likely fraudulent in the state of California. That's 1.2 million coming in. What that means to us locally is that the numbers are not in our favor on this. It's a, it's a huge problem. It's being addressed at multiple levels, and we'll talk about that on a future slide. The other issue we run into, tight controls versus open access and quick turnaround. I don't have to tell you all, the community colleges are predicated on open access, making it easy to come to our schools, making it free to come to our schools. And there have been, you know, some suggestions that putting up an enrollment fee may, you know, help mitigate this, and that's for folks, you know, in Sacramento to debate. But where we run into the real difficulty is, if we want to tighten our controls down to reduce the amount of fraud, it makes it more difficult on the other side for our students to, to get into college, to get into their classes. We make it tougher on the other end. Works in the opposite direction. We make it very easy for folks to get in, we're getting more fraudulent students who are taking up legitimate seats in classes. So it is a bit of a rock and a hard place there. Yeah, one of the things you might see in articles that have been coming out recently about enrollment fraud is, you know, they throw out numbers of fraudulent financial aid awards, and those are legitimate concerns. But the numbers we're seeing, at least in the articles I've read for the state, are relatively small. $10 million over the course of a year, when you consider $2 billion in financial aid goes to community college students, that's a very small percentage, and I think the state has to weigh out, you know, are we spending more to stop, you know, this problem? And that's for them to, to debate. But where it really impacts us is in enrollment. It's not just the financial aid going out the door, which is important, you have to give that back if it's wrong. But also taking up legitimate seats, keeping students from attending the classes they need to attend, and slowing down their academic progress, all reasons we need to, to do everything we can to keep the fraudulent actors out. I mean, it comes down to workload, you know, it's a heavy workload, not just for classified professionals and those of us in ITS, but faculty have to deal with this in their classes as well. As we'll look at on the next slide, kind of as our approach is developing, we use multiple filters to try to deal with things as high up the funnel as possible. And unfortunately, you know, we've, we've taken big chunks out of the fraud problem in the past, and the bad guys changed their tactics. And they are persistent, they're smart, and they're very motivated for this. So I'm, I'm no longer of the belief, if we clamp down hard enough, they'll just move on to somebody else. You know, I don't have to outrun the bear, I just have to outrun the person next to me. Same thing on this, at least in the past, but they seem to instead be playing the numbers game. We can talk about that in just a moment. Basically, our approach has been, we need to protect the enrollment funnel. So the front door, the application itself, CCC Apply from the state is our application across almost, I think, every district of the state. We have three separate levels of screening that we do for the application level, before anybody even gets into a class. So one of those is at CCC Apply itself, and the numbers are, thank you to Rachel for giving me the numbers today, numbers are staggering of what is being stopped before it ever even comes to us through CCC Apply. This last year, or in the last six months, I'm sorry, Los Pecitas had about 6,039 applications, and CCC Apply stopped before it got to other filters. Chubut College, and I hope you're sitting down, Dr. Brooks, that number that was stopped before it ever got to us was 63,000. Chubut is definitely targeted more than LPC for reasons we don't quite know, although the best guess is that they come earlier in the dropdown for colleges alphabetically. So if there's a name change in the future, they have. So here's where the unfortunate math hits us, right? So that's about 70,000 that were stopped entirely before they ever got to us through CCC Apply. And these are just approximations in just the model itself, right? I'm not, I'm not quoting specific numbers, but if that, out of that 70,000, if that was 90% of the total applications that were fraudulent that stopped before they ever got to us, if that, that filter was operating at 90% efficiency, that means 7,000 got through, give or take. That's a lot. And so our next tier is the LightLeap tools from a company called Intend Solutions. They are an AI company, so we're applying AI logic and an AI model to scanning those applications as they come in and assigning those a scale or a weight as to whether or not they're potential fraud. We applied that model recently to the application pool, and it came back at about 4,500 potential fraudulent students. We also have behind that our own internal filter, which assume that was about the same, right? So that's about 7,000, 8,000 that came in and we caught at that level. And if we do, if we're 90% effective, that means about 700 got through. And then we can do the math, 700 students taking 15 units or five classes a semester, it's a lot of students that can still get in. So coming up, we have, in the, in the funnel, we also have enrollments. And so our vendor, LightLeap, has a tool that will actually look inside the classes for potential fraudulent rollies, and it uses a different model than the one at the application side. So it looks at a different set of criteria when it does its, its analysis. That comes on at the end of the month, we're going to expedite getting that, getting that in place. That will send That will essentially allow us to pull students, fraudulent students, out of the classes themselves in a proactive way. And then finally, didn't have room for it in the little pointy part of the pyramid, the financial aid piece, there's another model that LightLeap is providing us that looks at financial aid and different criteria there. So it reduces our risk of sending financial aid improperly out the door, which, again, if, as the state adopts this tool, we'll hopefully see diminishing returns for the fraudulent actors. I don't want to sound negative, I don't know if this problem is going to go away in the foreseeable future, even if we tamp it down. What we've seen in the past is, if I'm sending out 100 applications, and you knock down a bunch of them, I'll just send out 200. It's a very automated process for the bad guys, and they've been really good at filling out our CCC Apply application and doing it automatically. And then finally, number three, cybersecurity. Just as a bit of a touch point, when we talk cybersecurity, it comes down to three things, and the acronym is CIA. Confidentiality is the first piece, the first leg of the stool. We see that with data breaches. I think it's, I'm going to go out on a limb and say, everybody here has got a letter at one point that said their personal information was compromised. I think most of us have experienced credit for it at least. Integrity, and when you see that, that's the quality of the data, does it mean what it says it means? Really, that appears in ransomware attacks, where someone comes in and takes your data, encrypts it, it's no longer what it means, it doesn't work anymore, and you need to pay up, or ideally recover from backups, tell them to pound sand. And then lastly, availability. And the cyber threat you most often see with that is what's called a denial-of-service attack, where some bad guy out there has recruited an army of microwaves, dishwashers, and TV sets that are all on the internet, and uses them to attack, say, a bank, and fill up their internet connection with traffic so no one else can get to it. So the availability goes away. With respect to continued efforts, you know, the saying, it's somewhat of a paraphrase, "The price of safety is eternal vigilance." We have to continue to do our district-wide monitoring, and we do that through a tool, won't say the name on the recording, but we have a tool that the board approved a couple of years ago, it's been very effective, so I thank you for that. We've also moved into cloud hosting, our key systems, our ERP systems now in the cloud. That speaks to that availability piece, right? We're no longer at risk of something happening in Livermore Data Center. We lose power, we lose heating and cooling, and we have to shut things down. It's much more resilient there. And then finally, our ongoing security training, which is really a must for any organization now from a compliance standpoint. I really want to thank HR for helping us get that in place for all employees on an annual basis. So we continue to make sure folks are aware of what the issues are. Security is really everybody's responsibility, it's not just an IT thing, it's not just a CTO thing, it's everybody's. So what we're doing now, or what's new, we upgraded our spam filter, we're putting in a self-service password reset, which should help remind folks to change their password on a more frequent basis and make it easier to do that. We talked about the AI-based fraud detection, and we've upgraded our backup system for what are called immutable backups in the cloud. So what that means is, the bad guys come in, one of the first things they try to do before they ransom you is they change your backups or delete them, or encrypt your backups, so then when it comes time to pay up, you can't restore from your backups, you have to write the check or figure out what else to do. The immutable backups are resistant to that, and they're in the cloud, so if something happens to building 1900 at Las Pecitas College, backups are secure. They had a matter of pulling those down from the cloud when we move our data center back to Chabot College while we rebuild Las Pecitas. The current state, this is a bit of a compliance thing that we do. The good news is, no reportable incidents in 2425 breaches, ransomware, otherwise. Not a guarantee for the future, and hopefully I didn't jinx it. Chancellor's Office is revamping their security offerings, they're bringing some new tools available to us, they're really taking a new approach on how we comply with statewide reporting. And then finally, my ask, and I think some of you have gotten this during orientations, we'll always take additional dollars, so if the opportunity comes, you can advocate for additional funding for security. That is tremendously helpful for us. The state has provided some money in the past, we'll take as much as they can send to us. So with that, we'll go ahead and take questions.
Thank you. Trustee Alonso.
A couple. So Class Web, you didn't say when it goes away.
It's phasing out.
No, I got that.
So what's happening is, by the end of this calendar year, it should go away.
Oh, so by December?
Right.
Okay, great.
Yeah, it's phasing out over time, but that's a caveat with, if all goes well.
All right. And then on the MyPortal side, Board Docs, because it said third parties will be connected?
We'll have to, we'll have to work with Board Docs and see if we can get that in there. I haven't thought through Board Docs yet, but if it works with single sign-on, we can put it in.
Okay. And then, just doing the mindless math on the 1.2 million for the community colleges, 10,000 per college, did want to congratulate Dr. Cooks for going above and beyond for the 63,000 fraudulent attacks. And presumably, that was fully not a comment, presumably continued progress and strategies to move everything to the cloud?
We're getting actually remarkably close to that at this point. There's a little bit of a funding twist to it, because cloud is operational.
Yeah, I get it.
Stuff we have locally, but from a cloud perspective, all of our ERP system is essentially in the cloud now, so what I'm calling these days the Bannerverse is in the cloud. Our email is in the cloud, our learning management system that colleges manage is in the cloud. We have local file storage, it's part of the email system, it's in the OneDrive. That's cloud-based, although we still have things locally as well. We've been doing a steady march towards putting everything in the cloud so far, but we have to look for opportunities on where we can do that, where it's cost-effective. Things charge us by the gigabyte, we tend to be in trouble.
Yeah, no, I get it.
Tend to work in terabytes.
First, I just wanted to thank you so much for the presentation and all the work that you do. I really love my portal, so thank you so much for that work. You know, Class Web is great, but I did have to memorize a lot of clicky-clicking, and it's just so convenient to have that space where I can just go every time I need something, and I know it's going to be linked there. So I just want to thank you for that, and then thank you for the rest of your work, too.
Thank you. I'm going to take that back to our folks in application services.
Go ahead. Hi. Can you hear me? I also want to thank you. Totally agree, Class Web is not as pretty, but it was also just so many more resources on the MyPortal, which I appreciate. Due to the transition of it being super different, like how to use both different applications, I wanted to ask about how older students who were so used to the My, or used to the Class Web can transition to the MyPortal easily, due to how many things are on it, just being able to access all the different things. And then, yeah, that's kind of it.
Let me put the screen back up real quick. So one of the things we found is, it's fairly intuitive, although we have some documentation out on the IT website on how to use it. The other thing you'll notice on the classic Class Web and the self-service tabs, those are cards, those are locked, you see the little lock in the upper corner? We put those there, you can't mistakenly get rid of those. So to that end, that's where your registration will stay, if you need to register, that's where your financial aid will always be, if you need financial aid. Gradually, those things on the classic Class Web card are going to migrate to the right under SSB, when we're finally done with everything on the classic Class Web card, it'll go away entirely. So that's the, that's the plan for making that a little bit easier. The other thing you'll notice, it's hard to read from here with my eyes, but across the top, just above the cards, you'll see, I think it says Home, Employee, Financial Aid. Those tabs all contain a catalog of cards specific to a role or for a function. So all of your financial aid cards, if you click on that, they'll all be there, whether you've penned them or not, they'll be there for you. So it's much more intuitive, we do have some documentation out there as well.
Thank you. Trustee Greer.
Thank you for your presentation, always helpful. And as somebody who sometimes is challenged technologically, it's always nice to see things be more user-friendly. And that's kind of where my question is, how do you, as a, you know, a technology, IT group, get feedback from users? Like, is there a sort of a set way that you get, you know, you just got some feedback right now, but I mean, is there sort of a, kind of a continual loop, so that you're aware of, like, where people might struggle and, yeah?
Yeah, we're actually, we're having weekly meetings right now on MyPortal, as we've started to really push to move in with folks from the colleges, and primarily in student support. And that input has been absolutely invaluable, because they're on the front lines with students. They're hearing, "Hey, this doesn't work, hey, so-and-so can't find this." So that degree of contact with them is important. We're having what we call summits through IT, where it's kind of a lengthier meeting, and we just open up a topic, invite everybody in the district to come, get sometimes 50 to 80 people that show up. And we explain some things on our end, but also it's a listening session. And then we have both a Help Zone for student issues with technology, as well as the Help Desk for faculty and staff, and we pay attention to what's coming through those ticketing systems and make adjustments as we can there as well.
That's helpful, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Heredia.
Yes. Thank you for the presentation, very helpful. Big job. You're providing a portal, new system for everybody to use and learn how to use it, and then support any troubleshooting that may present itself, and then the fraud problems that we continually have, and then providing access accurately and security. So thank you for all the work, and appreciate the training and the access and the help through the Help Desk, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, and it goes without saying, our staff on the IT side is just phenomenal. This is my seventh higher ed institution, and I know with this group, unlike some others, if something happens at 2:00 in the morning, they pick up the phone. I've been here during a power outage with somebody on Christmas Day, unbelievably dedicated.
Thank you. Trustee Garcia.
Also want to appreciate Mr. Griffin, the kind of the tireless work that I can see has gone into the development of the various projects and ensuring the ease of use on my portal, I've seen it firsthand, thank you, and the ongoing issue of cybersecurity. And I guess, I do want to ask, I guess, just your reflection and assessment of, like, how well-positioned are we as an organization right now to combat, protect ourselves against the ever-evolving cybersecurity threats that you see happening around us?
Sure. So you're only as good as, you know, how you did today, right? So today, we didn't have anything, so we're feeling pretty good about that. It is evolving. One of the things about the monitoring tool that was approved by the board a couple of years ago, is they actually have a concierge, Chief Information Security Officer service that we subscribe to as well. So they're excellent at providing us with intelligence coming in of, hey, there's a breach on this particular type of software, remediate it this way. So they're really kind of our eyes and ears out there in the universe, telling us what is an issue, allowing us to determine, well, this doesn't affect us, or this does, we've got to go patch these servers right now. So they're kind of our eyes and ears for that. We also work very closely with the state. They have a Chief Technology Officer at the state level, who has recently created a cybersecurity center at College of the Canyons down south, and they're doing some great work as well to really kind of bring the power of the colleges together on this front. Got some very smart people within the system, who've been elevated up to leadership roles within that cybersecurity center, so we're expecting some really good things from that as well.
Generally, you would say you feel pretty confident of where we are at, or?
I feel, I'm sleeping better, you know, at night, and, you know, there are very smart bad guys out there, though, that are trying all the time. We fight a lot of things off every day, and I feel good about that, I feel good about the work that's happened. But nobody who stood here would be telling you the truth if they thought, you know, we're impenetrable. It's just not, that's just not the way we realistically look at it. But we've done a good job, I think, so far. We're going to continue to do that, we're going to continue to try to grow as we can and build that program out.
Thank you again. I know that it takes a huge effort, part of all stuff. Thank you.
Okay.
You know, I don't have any, like, formal questions, I think my colleagues asked them, but I just wanted to just give deep appreciation to you and your team. Our IT team is really, I'm just always impressed, not just at the, like, vigilance for, like, you know, security breaches, and, which is a very serious issue, like, in our, like, you know, technologically advanced society, but really just the equity lens that I always experience, or just from the reports that I know the IT staff are doing, and that can sometimes be a challenge, you know, given sort of the, you know, it's so, like, technical of a skill set, but I just really, just wanted to extend appreciation for your team's commitment to ensuring that there's access in all of these updates and the work. Thank you.
Thank you. Security is an equity issue. My ability to bounce back financially from a data breach is different than a 19-year-old student who's, you know, working three jobs to go to school at the same time, so I really appreciate that perspective.
Yeah, I just have to echo my appreciation for you and your team. I can remember when I started teaching, I taught in the only computer lab on the high school campus, email was not a thing. And now, technology, the use of technology, when it's done well, all the work you guys do behind scenes, we take it for granted, that it's just going to work. So I just appreciate how you've made that happen for all of our students and our staff. And, you know, you do all the hard work, so we can just turn it on and everything works for us. And I do have to appreciate student trustees, Spring Board, and we, because Class Web, like, people asking me to help them, somehow, once you become a trustee, people think you know how everything works, and they're struggling, and I'm getting phone calls from people seven years ago, like, "I can't figure this out." And I'm like, "Well, let me help you," and I'm like, "I can't figure this out." So I really, really appreciate the amount of lift it takes to transition so much information from a current system to a new system, and doing that while you're still managing all the stuff that people expect to happen for them, so that they can operate the way they do in terms of security, this enrollment management, like, just operationally, it is amazing and a huge undertaking, so send our appreciation to your entire team.
I certainly will, thank you.
Thank you.
And are we considering renaming the colleges so that we're further down the dropdown menu? Is that the idea?
The district, yeah.
My favorite word, college.
That's what I heard, so we'll... So, we'll, we'll put that on a future agenda. Just kidding. Okay. Thank you very much. All right. So, moving on to item 2.0, reports from our faculty classified in student synods. Item 2.1, presidents of our faculty synods. We'll start with Chappelle tonight. President Abdu.
Hello, everyone. All right. So, this year, I'm looking forward to working with our faculty senators to make progress on some important goals. Our first meeting will be taking place next Thursday, the 28th. Supporting faculty, maintaining academic integrity in the age of generative AI will be a priority as well as pushing for greater part-time faculty equity and student success. As we move into common course numbering, phases two and three, I want to work collaboratively to ensure that faculty are informed and supported throughout the process. And with the compressed calendar to be in place a year from now, I see the faculty senate collaborating with our classified and administrative colleagues to rethink and strengthen shared governance in ways that reflect our evolving needs. And last but not least, our senate remains committed to ensuring that our campus continues to be an inclusive and welcoming space for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Las Pecitas. President Yen?
Thank you. We were honored to award the Reed Buffington Award to a humble yet outspoken and passionate warrior on behalf of equity, Michelle Gonzalez. Throughout the years, she has brought higher awareness to all faculty. She provided the Men of Color training, Elan Cora training, which was amazing. I realized, I found out that, that by and large, men of color, if they know that you care about them, they actually will, obviously, they'll be more motivated in your class, but they'll also see your topic as being more applicable to real life, which as a math professor, that's amazing. And she also was key in informing us all about microaggressions and leading several talks about that over campus. I remember one town hall where a faculty member, you know, joked about, you know, being, you know, what was it, crying like a little girl? And she instantly, you know, pointed out to all of us that that's a microaggression, right? It paints women in a weak position and it's just such a dangerous, you know, they're so dangerous and they're just all over our society. And then her latest crusade is linguistics justice, which she's a state leader in this topic. Linguistic justice, you know, is about letting students feel validated speaking in their own dialect and not having to conform to an academic, kind of academic talk. She's served on and chaired several committees focused on equity and led her pointe program for many years. One of our students summed it up perfectly. She is the greatest of all time. We also awarded the distinguished teaching and outstanding service awards last week. Mike Anson won the distinguished teaching award. He consistently demonstrates passionate and masterful understanding of chemistry and current applications that captivate his students and empower them to succeed in Excel. Hika G. Cox won the outstanding service award. For decades, Hika has supported every member of our community with dignity and respect. She tirelessly supports initiatives, work, and negotiations with the goal of serving this college and district to be in the best position to put students first. As we look forward to an exciting new year, we look forward, we look forward to setting new goals for the senate this year at our first official meeting next week. We had our senate and Brown Act training last week at college day, and I'm also looking forward to working with fellow senate presidents this year, Naomi and Aubrey from LPC and of course, Mona from Chappelle. I'm confident we're going to have a fabulous year. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our classified synods. President Dowry?
Oh, thank you. The Chappelle Classified Senate held our annual retreat on July 22nd in the event center on campus. This year's theme was unity in action. We are the connectors. It centers around the sentiment inspired by Queen Latifah's song, Unity, and how we can come together to create solutions as well as how classified professionals are the glue, the interconnected web that touches upon all aspects of the campus. Attendees engaged in three learning sessions about senate, shared governance committees, and professional development opportunities, and six team-building activities, including improv with Gabe Shapiro, a lecture and acting improv exercise, and process and action where we met in small groups to create constructive solutions to challenges we face. We took our annual senate photo and held prize raffles for attendees. Thank you again to Chappelle administrators for your support of Classified Senate. We truly appreciate being allowed to be together in community and advance our leaders' growth. As planned, Classified Senate held a special election to backfill two vacant senate seats from July 14th to August 6th. I'm pleased to announce we filled both seats and now have a full senate for the upcoming academic year. During the month of July, Classified Senate Vice President Kara Moore and I scheduled meetings with most of the deans and vice presidents. We wanted to get to know each administrator for who they are, what their reasons for choosing Chappelle were, and what their top concerns for both the college and for classified professionals are. We've enjoyed the meetings so far and look forward to continuing them in September, once the whirlwind of activity during the first two weeks of school has passed. Classified Senate also held a special meeting on August 8th to collect feedback on the new Classified Professionals Onboarding Manual being created in collaboration with the VP of Academic Services Office. We would like to take the opportunity to thank Vice President Forbes for her hard work and dedication to making this a great document. Classified professionals will be able to use the manual any time of the year now, no longer have, no longer having to wait until the next training opportunity to glean this knowledge. And lastly, I want to extend a warm congratulations to the winners of this year's Classified Senate Awards. The Robert and Linda Carlson Award went to Program Director of Trio Mesa, Maria Rodriguez Lellain, and the Rising Star Award went to Curriculum and Scheduling Specialist Jessica Vile. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. And from the district, VP Ranzillo?
Thank you. On behalf of our Classified Senate District President, we don't have a formal report this evening, however, we do look forward to providing details down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item 2.3, our presidents of our student synods. LPC, President Mangini?
Yes, thank you. So, we just had our LPC SG Fall Retreat last Wednesday, and like you all, last month, we had our Brown Act training and also our orders presented by SSC. They drove down from Sacramento to provide training to us. We'd like to thank our Region 3 leadership for that. We also had a staff and faculty lunch networking session here. So, I'd like to thank over 30 staff who came out to meet and spend time getting to know our student leaders here. We ran over our LPC SG bylaws, which were just revised and approved in spring of 2025. So, we've got a few changes there and it's like good to let, remind everyone what our governing documents are. And now, first week of school, we're tabling, we're doing back-to-school week, we have coffee, lemonade, tea. We're like showing students where campuses are. We've got a bunch of maps printed. We're advertising our senator applications as well. We had 25 interest forms filled out prior to the semester's start. And though the form officially opened last Wednesday, we already, last time I checked, had over 20 applicants on the form, even only two days into the semester, which is great because we usually have like around 50 per semester. So, we're seeing big turnouts there. We'd also like to, and that's for everyone, our welcome back week event coming up September 3rd and 4th. This is one of our biggest events of the semester and we're looking forward to it.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to item 2.4, union leadership. Our Faculty Association, President G. Cox?
Thank you. So, you heard my report last time that we were going to try very hard to have a collective bargaining agreement by convocation. That was not meant to be, but that was, it's actually a good thing. So, it's been a very, very busy and very productive summer. Critical language is being developed and the evaluation process is pretty much being updated. The FAA has been meeting with the district negotiation team just about every week over the summer. We all lock up, like our spreadsheets in this group. So, I had a little spreadsheet that I put together. So, since the beginning of the year, I think we've clocked about 150-plus hours just for negotiation. So, and because of the heavy volume of materials to be negotiated, additional dates have already been calendared all through the fall. And the FAA continues to appreciate the transparency from the chancellor's office and the valuable input of the district negotiation team. It's a great collaboration. We're very proud to be part of that team. And I think we continue to make strides and it's always, it's a pleasure to go to table, believe it or not. So, it's, there's never a animosity. We always work it out professionally and I'm very, very grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to item 8.0, information and discussion items. Do we have any questions or comments on our informational personnel report, item 8.1? No? Okay. Moving on to item 10, reports from our senior leadership team. Presidents of our colleges. We'll start with Chappelle. President Cooks?
Thank you, President Granger. Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of quick notes. One, we had a great convocation in college day at Chappelle, and so we, we were very happy to welcome everyone for convocation, the district there. Our college day was very productive in terms of, we talked about kind of the state of the college on that particular day. We had a great presentation, collaborative effort between our academic services and our student services areas. And they talked about kind of, yes, we have a strategic plan, but this is how we're going to meet the strategic plan. And so, I thought that was very, very good and landed very well. Tradition we started last year, we gave out T-shirts. And so, we had our, our brand new drop for this year with the T-shirts. And we also took a picture again in front of the, the new library. And so, we'll be able to share that with, with the board at a later date. Also, too, we, we had Discover Chappelle, which was, which was really good. We had over 300 students there. It was kind of like an orientation around what they should expect around Chappelle with the resources and the different programs. And one part that I thought was very, very cool was there were parents there. There were a group of parents that were there and I had an opportunity to speak to them, to say hello and to be able to actually share with them that I was in a similar stage of my daughter going to college, their, their students coming to college. And it was just good to be able to have a conversation with them around that and let them know that we were going to take care of their, 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 their young adults, their young adults. And then finally, the first day of school yesterday and today, great opportunity for the students to come, get back on campus, the hustle and bustle. From my understanding, the parking lots were full. And I just want to give a shout out to my VPs that I don't always have an opportunity to do, and they're here. So, Sophia Forbes and Luis Escobar for leading the effort in coordinating the welcoming tables and just being a great presence around campus. So, thank you. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. President Foster?
Yeah. Good evening, President Granger and trustees. It also has just been a great start to the fall semester at Las Pecitas College. Similarly, the parking lots are full and students have, have shown up, come in person, looking to still register. Counseling admissions have been full. Students getting their student ID. So, just a lot of activity with the start of the new semester. As mentioned, our students have been tabling along with our administrators and some of our outreach team, really just answering questions and helping students find where they need to go, which is always the best part, is welcoming new students to campus in that way. So, just appreciate everyone just being out and about and greeting our students in that way. I want to thank Chancellor Gerhart and his office for providing a wonderful convocation last week. I want to thank Dr. Cooks and his team at Chappelle for hosting as well. And then on Friday, of course, we hosted our college day activities as well. And so, really just a great opportunity to welcome everyone back to campus and prepare for the start of the new semester. And so, with that, I wish everyone a successful start of the new semester. And that concludes my report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to the chancellor.
Yes. Thank you, President Granger and trustees. At our, it's been quite a month, 19 days into it. At our August 8th Administrator's Retreat, we celebrated the theme Framing the Moment, a timely call to reflect, realign, and move forward with purpose. We celebrated strong momentum, celebrating 24% increases in enrollment, increase in enrollment since 22, 23. The focus and remarkable work by our counseling areas on SEP completions and our, as well as our financial aid offices and directors in terms of more students receiving Pell and Promise grants. And with that, as the board heard at the June board meeting from Vice Chancellor Nicholas, we are now on the, on the cusp of moving out of hold harmless in addition to increasing our student success rates. But it wasn't just about metrics. The retreat wasn't just about metrics. We were grounded, we grounded ourselves in the district's strategic goals that include equity, workforce development, basic needs, and enrollment growth and access. In the afternoon, we explored authentic leadership and challenging ourselves to lead with understanding, clarity, integrity, and real connection. The message was clear. The momentum is real and student success remains both our mission as well as our measure. Coming off of the Administrator's Advance, as we call it, or Retreat, I, you know, I'm old school, Retreat. At the Board Retreat or Advance was the next day on August 9th. As the Board knows, we grounded our day in our district strategic plan as well as our college educational master plans, reaffirming our shared commitment to student success, equity, excellence, and institutional effectiveness, focused on how we're turning our mission and priorities into action, tracking real gains in enrollment, financial aid, and student success metrics. We spotlighted dual enrollment, expansion through the Bay Area, Bay 16 Collaborative, and explored institutional tools like the CRM advised as well as our new counseling data dashboard, designed to deliver more personalized and data-informed and timely student support information. And then, of course, last week was convocation, and I thought was powerful start to our 25-26 academic year, gathered to reflect, reconnect, and recommit. And the energy in the room, I think, spoke volumes about our shared purpose and momentum. Thank you to President Cooks and his amazing team for hosting this year's gathering and the, all the amount of work and the lift that went into making it such a wonderful day as well as our maintenance operations area and chancellor's office staff. We celebrated really enrollment increases through shout-outs to our counselors and their tremendous work as well as our financial aid offices. But at the heart of convocation really was their students and our student panel, which focused on the experiences of our LGBTQ plus students. And I felt that their stories were honest, courageous, and deeply instructive. They remind us that behind every data point is a life and a student, that belonging isn't just an add-on. It's essential for our students to feel connected in the sense of belonging and that we invest in them. Our students challenged us to lead with inclusion, to teach with empathy, and to ensure that every student feels seen and supported. And as we begin this year, we carry their voices forward. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Do we have any recognitions tonight?
Yeah. Just quickly, just kind of echoing convocation and some of the comments earlier, really recognizing Michelle Gonzalez for being recognized by her colleagues, Faculty Excellence Award, truly deserving. I did love her comments in that, you know, usually it's a, an award and a celebration of someone's career, but she is, you know, as she said, nowhere near the end of it. So, she wasn't, I thought that was pretty funny, but really recognizing Michelle for her, really, her career and the great work that she has and so much more left. Next, in our recognitions, we recognize 36 individuals for the chancellor's awards, including one, Roydus Starling. I couldn't help but say that. And, you know, what's special, I think, for the chancellor's awards is that it's, it's, it's colleagues being recognized by colleagues. And so, I think that makes it even, even more special to, to know that, you know, your, your peers, your colleagues see what, see you and recognize you for what you're doing. So, and then last year, and last but not least, excuse me, is there was the unit award that was presented to our PRMG department, our Public Relations, Marketing, and Governmental Relations. Yeah, I heard the yes back there. Outstanding team led by our own Dionisio Ramos, including Chip Warner, Adalino Elo, and Bryn Lux. Thinking over, I think, three years when we created the positions, the director positions at each campus, it's been amazing to see the synergy that has come from to see the synergy that has come from really a PRMG department greater than two, and really embedding those supports at the colleges with really dotted line reporting to college presidents. So, really recognizing everything that has come from that team, amazing team, and supporting our counseling departments, financial aid departments, our general marketing strategy behind that, as well as all the micro-campaigns they do. So, congratulations, everybody, and, you know, looking forward to working with everybody in an amazing 25-26 academic year. That concludes recognitions.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to our trustees. Student Trustee Hui.
Hello. Before I start, I wanted to say thank you to Chancellor Gerhart. I mentioned previously that I was interested in a little bit more of our student statistics, so hearing our enrollment statistics, as well as our financial aid, is super helpful, especially when working with our Student Senate, to see how we can really help students engage on campus. So, in the summer, our classes have officially wrapped, and yesterday was the first day of our Fall 2020-25 Semester. It was incredibly encouraging to see a campus full of students with new and returning faces. Many classrooms were filled with eager students, and different spaces on campus were being utilized. We've been hosting welcome days in addition to other events where students were able to come get resources, as well as school supplies and refreshments, and Student Senate has been able to table, which we were able to introduce ourselves to the students and staff on campus. Within the next few months, we can expect multiple kickoff events, as well as welcome festivities by our Senate, student programs, and as well as our departments on campus, including the returning of our clubs. Earlier this month, our campus held multiple orientations for new students, such as those in our special programs, as well as the Discover Chabot event. The Student Senate has had our final summer meeting, where we were able to work on the team-building exercises, as well as planning for the fall semester, and will begin our regular meetings in the fall. And then finally, this past weekend, Trustee Springborn and I had the privilege to attend the 2025 Student Trustee Workshop, held by the Community College League of California and Ontario, California, where we were trained and educated on how to optimize our opportunities as student trustees, while learning how to perform better, do our roles, and learn more about our responsibilities. We attended additional presentations on topics such as the Brown Act, state issues, the legislative process, student advocacy, state budgets, board relationships, and introduction to professionalism. We met dozens of student trustees across California and got a chance to meet many of the 2025 to 2026 Directors of the SSC. It was truly a privilege to get to work alongside so many of these incredible individuals, while we represented drive, passion, and determination. We will soon be receiving copies of these presentations and photos from the conference, as well as some key contacts for additional resources and opportunities, and I look forward to bringing those back, the information, experience, and knowledge back to Chabot, where our Student Senate can hopefully create the best school year possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Student Trustee Springborn.
Good evening. I hope everyone had a really great weekend. Today was the second day of school at Los Bo, Los Chabot, but, and it's just so nice seeing campus so full. It's really nice seeing the library full, although it's hard to find a study spot. As President Mangini mentioned, we're currently tabling, so students can come caffeinate, students and faculty can come caffeinate and learn some more about our resources, our clubs, and then student government itself. We're opening, or our Senator applications are already open. Construction for the new steam building is underway. They made this big giant like wall to protect students from like the construction, and our names are on it. All of the trustees' names are on it. My name is on it, Savannah's name is on it, which is really cool. As Trustee Hui mentioned, her and I just got back from the CCLC Student Trustee Workshop. We learned so much, and it was just such an amazing experience. I met so many other student trustees. In particular, it was really interesting to hear about other community college districts in California and how the position kind of differs, like the student trustee position differs from district to district and college to college. We just learned so much from the people there. I'm not going to reiterate every single topic, she said, but it was just a really great experience, and I'm really excited to bring that information back into my role here at Los Pacitas. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Trustee Greer.
Thank you. I was able to attend Convocation, and it was, again, shout-out to the host school there, Chabot College. It was very well done. And something that the Chancellor brought up, and I think it's worth saying, you know, he said, "Behind every data point is a life." And the student panel that day, I think, was impactful for lots of reasons. And there's always a constant reminder here that student voices matter. We hear from students all the time, and it was a reminder that we need to hear things, and not always the easy things. Not every student said their experience was wonderful, and I think those are good learning moments for all of us. I know I walked away and thought a lot about what students said, you know, times they felt very supported, on times they felt very included, and kind of what happens when they don't, how that can sort of impact and shut down their learning. And certainly, we do a good job. I feel like we do a good job, but I feel like there's always room for growth, and there's always room to hear the feedback, and I felt like that was a great opportunity. So, thank you to everyone who made that happen, and just for the opportunity to really hear student voices. I felt like that was really impactful. So, thanks.
Trustee Moshe Didi.
Thank you, President Granger. I'll just sort of report first from, you know, District 3, Union City where I live. We had the annual Sister Cities Festival this past weekend, so it is, if any of you have ever been to Union City, it's like the one big thing we do with us. It's like a big cultural celebration. So, it was really great to see there, and we saw the, gosh, I might have put your Friends of the Chabot College Foundation, our foundation, folks, boards there, and staff members. So, it was a great event, and really just want to welcome everyone back to school year. Like, I think the beginning of the school year is always just a time of a lot of optimism and hope and just positive energy, and, you know, we really need that right now, and want to welcome back Ashley Young for this, you know, you were on sabbatical, was it, last semester, but, what you said. And I'm looking forward to your reports and, you know, the pictures there, you know, the pictures that sometimes come with it. And, yeah, with that, I'll turn it back.
Trustee Heredia.
Glad to be here. I attended strategic planning for the district's foundation, which was very inspirational. We set up our plan for seeking alternative funding, much needed, I believe, given the times that we live in. So, I was excited to have the collaboration of everybody and work on the plan. And then the following week, we attended the Board's Retreat, more planning and looking forward to the future and improving services and our teaching strategies for students. So, very inspirational. And then finally, attended the Convocation, which was very inspiring and very enriching. So, I was glad to be able to attend all three. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Alonzo.
I'm excited about this year, excited about the incredible growth at both campuses, the close-to-leaving Hold Harmless, as I look at Jonah. Being an ex-financial person, executive in my life, it weighed on me a lot. It dawned upon me the other day, it's like how often I thought about that over the last couple of years, because we were a long way from that. And because of the hard work of all of our counselors and the financial aid, and the growth, and the marketing group, and the whole team together, I don't want that to go, we're not there yet, but I want to make sure that we're looking at this optimistically as we go on the rest of the year. I'm excited about the winter mini-session. I think we're going to find that to be a game-changer. We talk about statistics and individuals. There are going to be hundreds of individuals whose life will be able to be better off, and they'll graduate sooner because of that, and I think of the impact of that. And then we had Etsy. I did all the math. As you can imagine, going back through your files, so seventy-five hundred people were impacted over the last year. Add to that the thirty thousand, I mean, the impact. Talk about a community college doing community work, and I'm excited about all of that and the work ahead. Then, of course, we have the challenges, AI. Lots of work can be done by the faculty and trying to figure out. And when you figure it out, let me know, because I swear I was reviewing, I teach grad school also, I was reviewing some papers I was explaining to the Chancellor, and I know they were written by that, even though Turnitin didn't trigger it and didn't tell me. So, I can't do anything about it, but it's like, okay, it's there. So, good luck. And then all the challenges with the Department of Ed and all that. But most importantly, the group, the collective group, is so strong. I know we're going to find our way through it all. So, thank you.
Trustee Garcia.
Well, first of all, the warmest of welcomes to everyone to the new semester. I want to share with everyone that, I mean, for me, this is probably one of the funnest, most kind of uplifting periods that happen over the cycle of a school year, and, I mean, it allows for so many opportunities, right? Connection amongst students, faculty to student, accessing whatever opportunities that unfold in front of them. So, I guess I just want to start with that. It's been a very busy period, I think, for everyone, and I truly want to commend the sense of kind of connectedness that happened even in all the work that we've been involved in, from the Board Retreat, to the Convocation, to the work that happened with our student panel, LGBTQ+ panel. Like, you could see the through-line very clearly about where we've been, the growth that has happened in that kind of group effort, and the direction where we still need to grow. So, thank you, thank you, thank you, all of us, all of you, for helping to do that, and I just wish us and you a great 25-26 academic year.
And I just think, I only have a little bit to add on top of what everybody is saying, or reinforce what has been said by the other trustees tonight. As I listen to everything tonight, the reports from all our leadership, the presentations, what really just was running through my mind was how inspired I am to really learn from you or hear from you, how you guys tackle really big things, and while you're doing that, you still remain focused on the students and the individual, and that is just really, really impressive, and a skill that is not easily found. So, I hope you guys recognize the incredible work you are doing, and I look forward to hearing all about the incredible things that happened throughout this entire year. So, with that, a motion is in order to adjourn. We have a first?
I'll make a second.
First by Trustee Heredia, second by Trustee Greer, without objection, meeting adjourned.